You what, Kelly? We've got work to do. And that's okay, but I don't want to release any detail. Somebody could still start to speak up today. Are you ready then? It's four thirty. I'd like to call the meeting in order, please. For public information, the copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of the Commissioner's Room. Roll call, please.
Meyer.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Knapper.
Here.
Reizig.
Here.
Blue.
Here.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have approval of the agenda? Any changes or modifications?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Record your vote. It's the outcome of the vote, Kelly.
Vote. I've got five yeses.
Thank you. Want to remind everybody, the Board does reserve the right to enter to a closed session anytime we feel is necessary and under the state statutes on the Open Meetings Act. Moving on to the consent agenda, anybody want anything removed from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes.
Okay, close.
Thank you. Motion to move into Board of Equalization.
I've got five yeses on the consent, sorry.
What's that?
I was asking if it was okay for me to close the
Yes.
vote, so we had five yeses.
Motion to move into Board of Equalization.
I'll make a motion, move into Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes, please.
Just a second. Okay.
Did the motion pass?
I need two more.
We're too early, I think.
Sorry about that. We'll get it figured out, boys.
I've got five yeses.
Thank you. First, I have discussed, consider rescinding the previous decision granting veteran health property tax exempt.
So I asked this to go on to the agenda. I did, I, I think we made the decision to grant them tax exempt status without all the necessary information. We kind of took them at their word. They said they were five oh one C three and we just kind of said, okay, that's good enough. And I think the, I think we as a board need, need to do a better job of requesting more information from the folks who present to us. I know Mark Harris has made this a, Mark was really good his first two years on the Board of, of reminding staff to, to provide this additional information to us. So I, I kind of want to get back to that, to where we're asking for more information before we make a decision. I also think we need to be providing this sort of information to other entities that rely on this property tax when we make our decision, so. I don't, I don't know, maybe this is already part of a process, but how do like, how does like the City of Gearing and how does this, uh, Gearing School District learn of these decisions that we make that ultimately affect their budgets?
I don't know that we do.
When we tell them what the valuation is for the City of Gearing or schools, that's when they learn about it.
Okay.
When they learn their valuations that they give their budgets and they'll do that in August, but Turk cases over right makes the route here. I don't know that there's a process to modify it.
Angie, you want to come up front here so we can get it on, at least get it on mic, then you don't have to talk so loud.
Yeah, we can't hear on the recording.
Sorry.
So one, like, when, when Heather does a vehicle tax exemption for us, she always tells us what the tax loss will be. I think that would be something that would be helpful for the Board when we do the property tax exemptions also, the real property tax exemptions. And then also the other part of my thought process here is that, you know, when, when we, when we voted on this two weeks ago, I s- I said, I voted no, I did not want to grant the exemption. And I don't think I did a, a good enough job explaining myself. But I, I am only willing to grant the exemption for the, for the area of the building that is designated for Medicaid or Medicare beds only.
And that's what we approved. So.
Well, we, I thought we did the entire main facility.
Well, it is, my understanding is it is. Let me, let me find my notes from Kim Johns from last year.
I think only ten percent of that main facility is, or only ten beds of that main facility is Medicaid and Medicare beds.
My information came from Kim Johns on site and she said that there are, there is no portion that's assisted living. There are twenty-two duplexes that are independent, therefore taxable. There are a hundred and two beds in the skilled facility. She said the large building is one hundred percent skilled and includes a chapel.
So of those hundred and two beds, I believe only ten of those are reserved for Medicaid and Medicare patients. The other ninety-two would be profit-making beds.
I believe that's how it was presented the other night.
And the other piece, I remember, I don't know if it was last summer or if it was the summer before when they came to, when they first came to this Board for an exemption, but I remember the conversation on the phone and I don't know who, you know, I think it was a lawyer who was representing them. And I think we probably go back to the tapes on this, but I, I remember them saying that they went into five oh one C three status to protect the family.
So they weren't actually present for last year's hearing. We did it without them.
Okay, so it must have been the year before.
This is the only, only the second time. So I don't know if maybe it was a different facility or something you're thinking of.
I'm certain it was this one.
So my understanding was, um, a year ago when this came up, my initial instinct was the same thing. I, I actually denied the exemption until I started doing some further research. So I reached out to the other counties that were in a similar situation because they had actually had their facilities transferred back in two thousand nineteen. So a number of them had already gone through the motions of asking the questions that the state, you know, indicates that we should be asking. And I heard back from Boxview, Dodge County and Douglas County is who I heard back from. They asked all of the same questions and I think that's why when they presented the packet to you guys this year, they already answered all of those questions, so I didn't feel the need to ask the same questions over because the questions that we would have asked were provided answers with their application.
That's the list, Angie, that, that the state provides, right? The state has a list of questions.
Well, they give us, there is, it's a statute. So the statute is a five-part test. And it says, sorry, I have too many papers here. That it has to be owned by an exempt ownership. It has to be exclusively used for an exempt purpose. They can't be for profit. They can't sell alcohol more than twenty hours a week and they can't discriminate. And so in their packet, she had referred to those statutes. There is another chapter in the regulations that specifically addresses healthcare and assisted living facilities. Which says a qualifying organization owns a healthcare facility which is made up of a nursing home and assisted living housing. The organization does not prescreen the applicants for financial ability prior to admission. The criteria for admission are the need for healthcare due to age, ill health, or physical disability. The facility meets the definition of a healthcare facility and/or assisted living facility under Nebraska law. All residents are permitted to remain in the facility regardless of their ability to pay for the services provided. In this case, the property is allowed an exemption because the property is used exclusively for charitable purposes. And that's right in our regulations. But those, when they sent in their packet, on page two, they discuss those specific statutes that they're bound by. On page four, they refer to the other fifteen facilities throughout Nebraska and additional facilities in Iowa and Kansas that are also tax exempt. On page seven, they discuss the income portion of it. Stating Heritage Estates does not financially screen its residents and it accepts persons on governmental assistance. In fact, a hundred percent of the units, that's what I was looking for. A hundred percent of the units at Heritage Estates are Medicaid certified despite the fact that Medicaid does not cover the cost of the care resulting in a financial loss on each Medicaid resident. Heritage Estates and does subsidize the difference between the private pay rate and the lower skilled nursing rate for Medicare residents. That was number one. Number two goes on further to say that they will not evict solely because they run out of funds. And then they, they keep going with answering the other questions about non-discriminating, not selling alcohol, and not being for profit.
So you're saying a hundred percent of their beds?
I'm saying that's what they said.
That's what they said. Where did you get your information, Charlie?
So she said, so in the reading there, she says that a hundred percent of their beds are certified Medicaid/Medicare.
They're not full.
That doesn't mean they're reserved for only Medicaid/Medicare
Correct.
patients. So, so so that, that's where I'm coming from, is that if, if someone's on Medicaid/Medicare, CMS is going to pay for the beds and then the resident's going to have to pay an, an additional cost. It's not, it's not that those beds are reserved for Medicaid/Medicare patients. A lot of times in these situations, a facility will have ten percent of the beds reserved for patients who can only pay the Medicaid/Medicare rate. Am I making that clear?
But that, but that's not what is, what they put.
And that's something that was asked when they were present to be able to answer that question.
How?
We should have asked that when we had the hearing.
Yeah, so that's, we should have asked a lot of people.
How many facilities do they have across the state?
They said fifteen in that example.
Are all, are all of those tax exempt?
Well, Dodge was the one that had been involved. These, these, like I said, went back to two thousand nineteen, so the three people who responded were from nineteen situations. Uh, she wasn't sure what happened in Boone County. Boxview approved both the assisted living and a nursing home. Butler approved. Custer, she wasn't sure. Dakota denied. I have no idea what happened with that. Dodge County approved. Jefferson County approved partial, denied a vacant lot. Lancaster, what, she wasn't sure. Lincoln County was a partial approval. The assisted living, but not the independent living. Sherman approved partial, including a chapel, and she didn't know what happened in Webster, so it was kind of about almost fifty-fifty of not known.
In your, in your opinion, with the information you received, they are tax exempt, is that correct? That's the information that you gave us?
Correct.
Okay.
Which was part of what I based my decision on.
Okay.
Or my recommendation.
I think the tax status for federal, for exemption is for federal, isn't it? Isn't that for federal income taxes what the exemption's for?
No, no, this is, this is a specific set of regulations that apply to churches or in the same category. They have to follow that same five-part test.
Right. But if they, if they rent out their parsonage and the minister doesn't live there and they rent it out, then they, they pay.
Then it goes back on the tax rules. We had one of those this year.
But there's a lot of those rooms that are paying nine and ten thousand dollars a month for one person to be in one of those rooms out there. I know they're, they're, I was given almost eight thousand five years in one of my lodges.
Well, it's, keep in mind that they were for profit. They've just changed to a nonprofit situation here a couple of years ago. And they are actively developing behind there, so they're, they're adding new growth, new construction. Like hotcakes, quite frankly.
So the information that they gave you meets your requirements for tax exempt?
Correct.
Is that correct? Like, like any other, if a church or a medical facility or something else.
Right.
Regional West, you know, we scrutinize the stuff that they send in to us, obviously.
Yes, for the exact same reasons.
Right, right. What would be the reason why we would not exempt this facility?
That's a good question. I am not aware of how I would dispute this.
So one, one question that came to mind was, if this is a cut and dry, you know, fill in the answers here, tell us why you're exempt. Why does it still come to us for a decision? That, the idea that it comes to us for a decision implies that we can say yes or no regardless of what they put on their form.
And you can't. But then if you deny it, they will take it to the next level, which requires a county attorney and a case to defend on why, why it wouldn't be overturned at the Turk level. Anything over a million dollars requires a county attorney.
Million dollars in value.
In value.
What is, what is your concern, Charlie, as far as why this shouldn't be tax exempt? I guess I've, I've missed that.
I guess I, I just haven't been convinced that they're in a five oh one C three for the right reasons. I, I specifically remember them telling us that they went to five oh one C three to protect the family. And I don't, I mean, I'm certain they're, this is not a, I mean, they, they have five oh one C three status, but, but I don't, I don't trust that it's, in the best interest of.
Can I ask a question or put a thought out there? Okay, the skilled nursing part is Medicare/Medicaid eligible, the, the ten beds or whatever you guys were saying. It's those other beds, the true nursing home beds. We're not talking about the cottages they're building, nothing with that. The true nursing home where a person is very ill. I didn't think Heritage previously allowed Medicaid-eligible people, Medicaid-only eligible, until they became five oh one C three. Now they cannot turn people away like they used to. So when they are for profit, I'm not sure that they would allow someone who only relied on a Medicaid payment for their room. So maybe that's when it changed.
So if they've got, as you're saying, Charlie, they have ten beds that are designated, they're not going to turn anybody away, with the eleventh bed and twelfth bed or thirteenth bed, correct? Would that be a correct statement to make or?
I'd say that'd be right, but that's what she gave us was ten beds and I agree with that.
Yeah, that's someone, when they can't come off of surgery, come out of the fourth floor of the hospital and they can't go home, they can go to a skilled bed in a nursing home. Medicaid will pay up to forty-five days. Do you happen to know, Paulette? Forty-five days. Medicare will pay.
Medicare.
And then, but Medicare does not pay for nursing home stays. That is not part of your eligibility.
So then you'd have to get on Medicaid in order for that to kick in.
You ha- you have to be eligible for Medicaid, of which not everybody is eligible.
Right.
And you pay ten thousand dollars a month or whatever that big number is. So now they're allowing those Medicaid people and probably only getting the third or a fourth of what they would pay, receive for a private pay person. Just my thoughts.
So I would just mention a couple of things. They, yeah, back prior to them becoming a five oh one C three nonprofit. They certainly, uh, because I was there and they asked all kinds of financial questions prior to them allowing you to come in. Now, apparently, that's not the case anymore. Apparently they can't do that. And so sometimes they may, they probably won't know whether this is a Medicaid person or not according to what you just read to us.
Well, and there's always the opportunity that maybe they can financially afford their units and then they run out of funds and they wouldn't be evicted because they no longer have the funds.
And I do believe even back then that they had people that had money to begin with. After a couple of years, maybe two years, three years, who knows how long, they run out of money and then they become Medicaid customers, so to speak. And they certainly, in the ones that I was aware of, certainly kept them there and let them, let them be there. But I think the thought, I, to me, that we got two or three questions here. Number one, if they are a five oh one C three, according to the IRS, they're a five oh one Z three. We can't, we can't take that away from them.
No.
So that's a federal tax status. And, um, so.
That's not all it takes to require to, to qualify for a permissive exemption. There's more to it.
Right, and you, um, so let me go back and just say that when I knew this was coming up on the agenda, I called Sarah Scott at the Department of Revenue, um, who deals with this a lot, and I asked her if she knew, was there a particular, uh, opinion from their office, the Department of Revenue, about nursing homes and specifically on the veteran nursing homes? And she said, no, we don't have an opinion. They would have to go through the questionnaire and provide all that information and then, of course, it goes to the local Board of Equalization. She said, um, and then all, obviously that if they don't agree with it, they go to Turk. And I said, okay, yep, I think I understand that. And she had mentioned to me that, um, I said, so have they won the cases at Turk? And she said, I'm not a hundred percent sure of that. She suggested I call Boxview County, which I did, and you just mentioned that they're exempt at Scott, or at Boxview County. And that's what I understood as well. When I called there, the county assessor was not in and, um, I did talk to someone though and they said, she's, I don't know the process, but she said, let me look. She looked and said, we show them as exempt. And so apparently they are.
So back in, in two thousand nineteen, the department does have, um, examples of questions that you can ask because these cross multiple types of facilities, so there's different questions that may or may not pertain. So I did get that from Kathy Guzman a year ago when we started all of this. And having looked at what Boxview County and Dodge County had sent out, they basically followed those same questionnaires when they asked their questions initially. So I had, I had their responses in addition to what we got for our county.
And I'm assuming those are, those responses are the same and have been for,
Mm-hmm.
since they've become a
Boxview said that she had reached out to Kathy Guzman also, who posed to ask these questions. Veteran used to own one nursing home, when, then when they tran- that when they formed VSL, they purchased two facilities here. VSL Alliance Assisted Living and VSL Alliance. The first one, as it, the name says, is it assisted living. The second one is a nursing home. They are both exempt. Douglas County didn't really ask as many questions and Dodge County, same thing, January. Both of these cases were January of two thousand nineteen and they basically asked almost identical questions.
Angie, if, other than losing their tax exempt status, if somebody falsified that questionnaire or that test, as you call it, are there any other penalties or any other repercussions for doing that?
Um, they, we also actually require them to provide their articles of their corporation when they file for the first time. And in their first paragraph about their purpose and power, "They were created to acquire, build, own, and operate nonprofit homes for the physical, psychological, and spiritual care of elderly persons without restriction as to race, creed, or color. Said homes being described by various names, including but not limited to the following: independent living communities, assisted living communities, memory care communities, nursing homes, care homes, extended care facilities, senior citizen homes, rest homes, convalescent homes, and retirement communities. To construct, own, operate, and maintain general and specific facilities upon a nonprofit basis for the medical care and treatment of patients without restriction as to race, creed, color, or age, and to engage in contracts or agreements for the construction, ownership, operation, and maintenance of facilities with municipalities, counties, states, or other governmental subdivisions for any lawful or legal purpose. To construct, own, operate, and maintain extended care facilities for the convalescence of patients or for their care, education, or treatment of disabled or otherwise handicapped purposes persons without restriction to race, creed, color, or age. To relieve, provide relief to the poor and underprivileged, to promote social welfare, to promote the public health, to educate the public, and to make distributions to organizations that qualify as exempt organizations under the five oh one C of the internal IRS nineteen eighty-six code."
So, one of my questions is, we voted on it two weeks ago. Now, I mean, is it as simple as us saying, huh?
So we actually can't make a decision tonight because that would violate their due process. If you wanted to pursue it, we would, um, re-advertise, put it in the paper, send them a public hearing on ten days' notice and we would have to rehear it again in another meeting. Because they would have, they would need the right to be able to discuss it.
Right. Makes sense.
Charlie, you made the comment on tax exempt properties that you're looking for. More informa- what other, what additional information would you need? Maybe not only on this one, but others that are coming?
I guess I'd be interested to know the demographics of their facility, you know, how many of them are Medicaid, Medicare only? Um, payers and how many of them are, how many of the beds are private pay, you know, in that ten thousand dollar range? That's, it's kinda what I would like to know. Um, you know, if they could, if they could provide us a list of their hundred and two rooms and say, ten of them are Medicare pay and ninety-two of them are private pay, you know, what are they getting from the Medicaid rooms? What are they getting from the private pay rooms? I guess that's kinda what I would start.
Is that a factor in determining whether they're tax exempt or not?
I don't know that it is.
What was that line? You, you mentioned one of the, one of the questions, one of the five questions was exclusively used for-
charitable purposes?
I guess I, I would just still be in, interested in, in gathering more information from that.
So I guess if you had a list of your questions, you could send them to me and then we could look into those.
Okay.
One thing I'd like to know is the assessed value that we did exempt. Is it the full eight point one million or did we exempt a portion of that?
No, it, it's a portion. They're actually assessed at eleven million three, if I recall. Um, Gearing's gonna be getting a commercial increase and so they were actually part of that. So whatever I had on there, I wanna say it was about four point two.
So the de, so it's four point two off of the, uh-
No, that was still taxable.
Four point two is still taxable.
Don't quote me completely, but-
Off of fourteen, but we, we exempted-
Out of eleven.
Out of eleven, okay.
But that would have, whatever Gearing is getting for the increase i- is applied to that.
Four point two.
I appreciate you putting that together.
So four point two million, eighty thousand dollars in round numbers for the total tax. I'm just using a two percent figure.
That'd be a decent.
Um, and half of that to the schools and thirty, forty percent to us.
That's a lot more palatable than the other way, I guess, but, uh, still a pretty, pretty big number.
It's, I, I realize it's a decent chunk of change, but not being able to have a legal argument isn't gonna, you know, I mean, it's, how far is it gonna go?
And, and that's why I keep asking the question is, what, 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 over and above what you told us, the information that you received, that you received and presented us to help us make our decisions, what in additional to that would we need to do something different, I guess?
We'd have to find why we didn't believe that they met the, the criteria of the five-part test. If his bed count shows that they really are for profit, but I, I think that's gonna be a hard case to win.
Yeah, cause even if they're making ten thousand dollars a month off of the room, that doesn't mean they're not using that ten thousand dollars a month for a charitable cause.
To help subsidize the other-
They're not supposed to distribute to like their officers and, and people like that. They aren't supposed to give out bonuses. It's supposed to go back into their organization.
I think if you refigure that, Mark, we, we figured what we're gonna retain, but we're losing the seven million times the two percent. We're losing a hundred and forty thousand. We're giving up seven, we're keeping four, right?
Yep.
So we're losing a hundred and forty thousand in taxes.
And, and, and I don't, I'm not, I, I'm concerned about that. But what also concerns me is that are we going to scrutinize every other one that comes through here?
I would really like, I think we should.
Okay. That, that, that's what we're gonna, then-
Keep in mind that you do this every four years.
Yeah.
Next year is the long form. You will see absolutely every single application that comes through the county and have the chance to make a decision next year.
For exemptions.
So every four years they have to fill out the long form and
they're automatically, they have to, they just, they just sign off on the three in between.
Basically reapply.
These guys were new, so that's why you've seen a new application two years in a row. We denied it. They've applied again. We will be filling out a new one next year because it's a year divisible by four.
Okay, so in, in addition to what Angie presents us, what we're asking for is additional information to prove that they are in fact, meet the requirements for tax exempt. Is that what I'm hearing?
I would like to see, yeah.
What other information would you like to see?
Well, the other, I'd like to see the tax revenue, you know, what we're actually loo, what we're giving back. So that the school district kinda knows what we've done.
Okay, but is that going to make a difference in your decision whether you're going to make them tax exempt or not?
Uh, it depends if we're gonna be allowed to. If we, if it's gonna be that we've got to do it, then I guess-
If they meet the requirement, if they meet the requirement, that's-
But at this point, we haven't really seen any of that stuff. All we did is we sat here and voted on something that we had really no answer.
Well, they sent all of those questions to you in your packet. They, they, their application was about that thick. They answered all of those and provided that with their application, including the articles of information.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not against getting all the information you can before you make a decision.
No, I don't disagree.
But I, but, uh, if we're, if we're gonna do it for this one, then be prepared that we should be doing it on every one that comes, comes in front of us.
And most of the time they're just ongoing churches. They're, you know, it's, it's a bigger deal when you see a new application rather than one that's been getting it for decades.
Yeah, I would agree with that. If you've got something that's been exempt for, since their existence, unless they have some type of change within that organization.
And you, we did. We had a parsonage that was rented out, so it paid taxes a year ago. And then they had a new application for this year because they have a pastor back in it.
Okay, well, I, I would, I guess I would just like the board to, to maybe move slower in this process in the future. You know, I think we listened. Um, I don't think, um, you know, and the, the other piece of this is we're, we're solely taking them at their word. We're not, we have no, we have nobody investigating whether what they put on their form is, is correct or not.
A- as we do with all of them that are.
Yeah.
Every one that comes in.
Yeah.
We have to take their word for it.
Yeah.
That's-
And we do. I mean, we try, we try to screen things. You've seen me deny things before.
So you, you go, you go on beyond just whatever's on the form you're actually doing. So you're doing the same thing that we're asking us to do.
I got this and denied it last year also.
Yeah.
Until I did some more research.
Sure. Sure. Understood.
And that's where we need, I think, a little more research to, now you were saying that the, the state has to approve this prior to us and it's still not been approved through the state as far as you know right now.
No, that's not correct.
I'm, I'm just said that the Department of Revenue helps make that list up of questions and qualifying, um-
They don't like to get involved in legal situations, so they provide guidance.
Right.
So who verifies that those questions are answered correctly and that they do qualify?
So, for example, um, we still have pending cases from twenty twenty because what happens is when, and I did hear from Deborah Williams today, who is the legal counsel, who I think Sarah reached out to her for some guidance. And we, when we scanned in the application, they had the application but not the packet, so I sent that to her this afternoon when she called. Um, but last, in twenty twenty, when we had the long application, it comes through me, we make a recommendation, or my predecessor, then it comes to you guys, you guys decide. But then Kelly is also required to send them to the Department of Revenue within a seven-day window because they can appeal if they also challenge, if they do it in a timely fashion. We had what, about twenty of them that they are questioning and we still have a few pending? Cause we have a-
You're talking, you're talking about the state?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
This, the state of Nebraska, the Department of Revenue has challenged about twenty of the approvals.
There is some checks and balances besides us then. Look at all of that, correct?
All right, well, that's good to know. I, I didn't know that it went to any further scrutinization unless we denied it and it went to Turk.
That's what we were saying.
No, it actually goes in the other way. The ones that we've denied, I'm on my own to defend because I didn't, they aren't there to help legally.
Okay. Right. Right. Okay. Well, that's, that's helpful.
Yeah, that is, that's-
But if we approve the exemption-
Then they scrutinize them also.
Then the state also looks at it.
All right. Well, that's, that's good information.
I have, um, one entity that had sixteen parcels. We have had the case, but I haven't heard the results yet. And I have, I believe, three that are still pending because they were, uh, rescheduled.
And so that's, um, a review at the Department of Revenue and that's, um, different than Turk?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Different set of people.
Um, but each, each phase can still be filed to Turk.
Right.
If, if the department makes a decision and either us or the taxpayer is not happy, they could still go to the next level.
To, right. Okay.
These can actually go all the way to the United States Supreme Court.
I wonder, so Turk and then court and district court or something and then could go on up?
Um, mm-hmm. There's like in Nebraska and then they can go on up, up, there's an appeals court.
Okay, so what do you wanna do on the, uh, on, on the agenda item it asks for to consider rescinding the previous decision? Do you wanna continue with that?
Uh, no, I, I guess for now I just, could you resend me their long form application and I'd like to go over it in more, more detail.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay.
Um, I just sent it to Deborah. It's got my signature on it. It just doesn't have Ken's signature on it, so I'll just resend that out. I can send it to the whole board.
I would just, you know, not ask, I'm not asking for any action. I didn't know we were putting this on as discuss and consider. I thought we were just gonna discuss because we hadn't.
That's how you ordered it, so that's how I put it.
Right.
I'm sorry.
But I, I, I assumed-
Me and I spoke and I just didn't have a chance to talk to you about it.
I assumed we weren't gonna consider because we hadn't had the time to notify them with the ten-day notice and all that kind of stuff, so. So I have no, I have no plans for action. Did you need me to make a motion for no action or?
No, because we really couldn't consider it anyway.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so back to our conversation. Angie's gonna need to know what other information other than her standing in front of us and say they've met all the requirements. What other information do we want from her? And you may write it down or text her or email her or something, if there's other, other information that you'd like to have.
Well, and at the end of the day, the burden of proof is on them. That's why they have to have the opportunity to, to speak, but then you would have the opportunity to ask questions if they didn't give you enough detail, like how many Medicaid.
And, and, I mean, obviously we have to trust whatever information they're, they're giving to you that they're, that they're giving, unless we find out something different, obviously. And, and I know that we've done that. I hate to keep bringing it up, but back in the day when Lisa was at the hospital, we questioned a lot of the things that they did also. Uh, and most of the time we were wrong, so.
We have a couple of those pending.
That's how you learn, though, I guess. I'm still learning.
Okay. So if, if you have specific things that you'd like to have in addition to the information that Angie presents us, make sure that she knows what that is.
I would like to see what the total exemptions were and the tax implication on that.
Tax losses, what the ta, total tax loss is gonna be?
Yeah, so that, cause that's gonna be after made up by the people gearing. The county can't make it up. It's gonna be the people gearing apparently.
Okay.
City gearing's gotta do that.
Not every church has actually been-
Pardon me?
We, we have a lot of internal work on putting values on exempt properties because that wasn't something we ever kept track of in the past.
Oh, I would imagine. I bet, I bet it isn't any fun. Don't envy you at all on that.
I think it was, I believe it was Morale County several years ago when, uh, Steve Erdman was on the board, did, uh, just a, a non, not an expert, uh, search to find out how much tax money they were losing on all their exempt properties. It was, it was a lot. It was a lot of money, even a county like, like Morale.
Well, and you, we're, I provide you guys a spreadsheet each year, but then, like I said, next year you'll be seeing every single application. You're gonna have to sign off on them.
Sure. Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you, Angie.
Naco does, does suggest that every property be assigned a value. Like in Lancaster County, they have a, they have a value on Memorial Stadium. It'll never be taxed, but they still have a value on it.
But there's a value.
That's something new that this department's pushing for as well. We just haven't had a chance to get there yet.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Angie. All right, moving on, moving on.
Thanks a lot, Angie.
We need to discuss and consider a tax refund on tax parcel zero one zero two nine seven seven two seven.
So this is a tax, so anytime we get a tax refund question, um, even though it has to do with the assessor's office, um, correcting the taxes to make them go away, I have to bring it, they have to ask me for the refund. This parcel has been double assessed since, um, two thousand fifteen. And I believe that it was at your protest last year?
Yes.
Correct.
And, um, so they've asked if we can, um, do a correction that goes back all the way to two thousand fifteen. We are not allowed to go back for then three years.
Three years, three years, yeah.
And with that, um, Angie talked to, would you talk to them?
Well, since Deborah Williams called today, I asked her to confirm because I did not hear back from Dave on this particular item. But she spoke to her colleagues and they got back to me and, no, twenty-two, twenty-one and twenty and twenty are all we can do.
And by doing that, we're legal to do that because we double taxed them. Okay?
They're just taxing you now.
Okay. Yeah, I think we had that long discussion in protest about all of that. Okay.
And that's where she made the request is if, if we'd have let her have a protest at no value, they'd have gotten an extra year of request.
Okay, but right now we're gonna go back three years. And what does that amount? Remind me.
I did not look.
I apologize. I wanna say they were about seven hundred, seven fifty a piece.
A year.
A year.
Okay. So we're not talking about a ton of money.
It's not a horrible reason.
Okay. All right. What's the pleasure of the board? Oh, we can, we'll take a motion in a second, then we'll ask more questions and discussion.
I move that we approve the, uh, three-year refund on the taxes.
We have a motion. Is there a second on the motion?
Second, yeah.
Okay. We'll, we'll open up for more discussion and questions, please.
I got a question.
Go ahead.
So, um, yeah, this is the one that, uh, was kinda lost in the mapping story and then it was found and then we found that
Right.
it had been being double taxed. Is that what we're saying?
They did a bunch of replating across and then when they did that, there was ownership between Kelly Bean and the city of Gearing. So there was a lot of flip-flopping of properties. We had a strip that showed up on the map that had a really old parcel number that didn't show up in the assessor's office, um, which is kind of what Gwen started looking for. She found an old tax statement from back in two thousand one with that number on it and we kinda started researching from there. The piece that was valid for being valued and assessed in the assessor's office wasn't located on the map, but we weren't confident where it was. And some of the old records in our file, we actually thought it was to the east, but Ashley worked on it this recently and it's actually along Ten Street.
There was some railroad property involved in that too, wasn't there?
Yeah, so we, that railroad strip and it is now back on the tax, on the assessor's office.
I remember, I, yeah.
So we agree that, um, they were taxed inappropriately on this and your offices are saying, yes, we owe this money back.
Yeah, and like, so Kelly Bean has asked that we go back to two thousand fifteen and unfortunately we can't do that
Right.
um, because of statute, but we can't go back to three years.
Can we send them a copy of the statute down and note attached so they know what it's about?
Gwen's aware. I, I, we, I've been working with her.
Are they, are they aware? Okay.
Yeah, and I have, you know, well, we've been email, I mean, she's been emailing, emailing back and forth with, um, Gwen and Dave and everybody on this. So she is aware that we probably will be able to make it back three years. But the original request, um, on March tenth was to go all the way back.
Okay. Any other discussion or comments, questions? Okay, not record your vote.
Okay, close?
Yes.
And we've got five yeses?
Thank you. Okay. Motion to move out of Board of Equalization?
Will we, um, move out of Board of Equalization?
Is there a second?
All seconded.
Any discussion? Record your votes.
Give me a second, sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, moving on to, uh-
I need your s-
What's that?
I need your vote.
Again?
You did record, sorry.
Okay. I don't know what I'm doing wrong.
You might have voted before I got it actually opened up for you too, so.
I was too fast.
Too fast, okay. And we've got five yeses.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to general agenda items. Discuss and consider the purchase agreement from the city of Scotsbluff for land parcels at the east end of South Beltline Highway. Mr. Kelly, you're up.
Well, we've gotta discuss this a few years ago and you agreed to sell this property to the city of Scotsbluff for twenty thousand dollars. They have, we put together the agreement between myself and Ken Hayden felt that you should have and it's assigned under there in the city. We just wanna make sure that we all understand where- We just wanna make sure that we all understand where this property is. They've also agreed to take over maintenance of the road from Ninth Avenue all the way to Highway six around the curb. And, um, the issue is whether we're selling them this property, which is on both sides of the MVBD substation, and, and the highway runway. So those are the two parcels that are being sold for the twenty thousand dollars. They're gonna use that.
One that ends in nine three and the one that ends in eight five, is that correct?
What initiated the, the city to take over the maintenance on that road? How did that get?
We asked them to. They didn't want to have to maintain it anymore and it was, one of the parcels is the road and the right of way, so as part of the contract, we asked them to, to take care of, of the, uh, snow maintenance and there's a bridge there. And that was part of the contract is they will, uh, do the snow removal and maintain the surface and, and so the county will not have.
Including the bridge?
Including the bridge.
And that's when they're gonna start at Ninth Avenue from all the way east.
Yeah. So clear back at Ninth Avenue?
Yes.
To do the snow.
So what's, what's, what's in front of you tonight is to authorize, uh, signing of the contract. The closing won't occur yet for a while because there's a statutory requirement between two political subdivisions that they have to file some, um, um, some notices for the city and we have to file a notice for the county, so we request title insurance. Closing would be in thirty or forty-five days and then be a final resolution that will be signed, authorizing the sale, authorizing you to sign as chair of the documents and that sort of thing.
Okay.
So tonight you're only agreeing to the contract and we're gonna do the statutory steps to provide notice as required by the law. And there's two political subdivisions on both sides of the transaction. That's the only step required. We have to give notice.
Are we in a position to make any changes to this contract, contract that you have now?
This contract is, is not accepted until you vote.
I mean, can we negotiate anything on this contract?
We've already been doing that.
I realize you have, but I think with the amount of money that it's gonna cost the city to do that, we got two political subdivisions. I think we should either cut the price or give them the property and let them pay all the legal fees.
But you voted to sell it to them for twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, we.
But I realize, but I, you know, you've got two political subdivisions. You normally just unreal that type of stuff. They normally hand that off. It isn't really a big amount of money transfers, huh?
There's a contract where they're agreeing to pay you twenty thousand. You voted to.
To accept that.
To accept. You can sell it to them for twenty thousand dollars and accept for more. And this is for their transfer station. I think that was, as I recall, the comment was that, um, since they're not talking to you about transfer station and being involved in, in that sort of thing, you're happy to sell it to them for what they, by the offer to you.
They're actually getting a little more actual land here, but they're committing to the maintenance of.
They have a pretty big obligation.
Which will, which will eat up that twenty thousand dollars pretty quickly, I'm guessing, Mark.
Right. Which to me.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Espe- especially if your bridge goes out.
Yeah, well, in Ninth, we, that wasn't in the original part to take over Ninth to the Beltline, but we would be.
You just sweetened that up.
That's why I think we oughta sweeten it back the other way a little bit.
So we took the twenty away, yeah, just made it a swap.
Okay.
So what's before you tonight is to accept the contract, the sign of the contract.
Okay.
Well, I, there's no doubt that, I understand what you're saying, but I think it's in the best interest here of the county and because of that, I'm okay with it the, the way it reads. Cause otherwise it's gonna have to go back to them to get rewritten, to be re-signed by the mayor.
And they might change their mind about me and Ken.
Other things, yeah.
No, that's not.
Yeah, I'd rather not muddy the water at this point.
All right, with that, taking that in consideration, I would entertain a motion for approval of this real estate purchase agreement presented.
I would move approval of the purchase agreement from Scottsbluff, from the City of Scottsbluff for land parcels on the South Beltline Highway.
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any more discussion? Can you, can, can you convince us to do something else for us?
No, I don't think so, but I, you know, I'd like to bend a little better, create a little better, you know.
And that's okay. That's fine. Everybody's entitled to their, to their opinion on it. Any other discussion? Record your votes.
Am I okay to close?
Yes. What was, what, I can't tell up here what.
We've got five yeses.
Okay, thank you.
And does, does anybody have the original signature of your mayor or just have it signed as well?
I've got email.
Okay, I just make sure I have the.
I'll just, if you hang on two seconds, I'll give it to you.
Okay.
Oh, you, do, do you have?
Our original signature. I'll give it to Rachel.
No, I think I can manage. I actually said I'll, I'll probably tell him I'm gonna be asking you questions and working with you.
Okay, there you go. All right. All right, moving on. Uh, discuss and consider the Resolution allowing Scottsbluff County Public Transit to Apply for Funds Available under Section five three one one of the Federal Transit Act and through the Nebraska Public Transportation Act for the purchase of two new public transit vehicles. Kurt?
Okay, um, as we're working up towards the next budget cycle, we're extending the lead times of having vehicles. Trying to work forward a little bit here to like replacing some vehicles. So what I'm asking for permission to, to do is apply for funds, uh, for two vehicles. One is another lower four minivan. Uh, we actually had one, the motor just crapped out on it and we're looking at, uh, way more than the value of the vehicle. We replaced the engine and DOT has recommended.
What do you do with the vehicle then? Is it?
They go, they'll go to auction.
Okay.
The sheriffs, the, the big air.
Does that money stay with us or does that go to the state for our matching?
If the, we, we can keep, uh, ten percent of it essentially. If it's, if, if we get enough, but we, we can only keep ten percent of what is, uh, unless the vehicle, for instance, we have the two purchased with a hundred percent CARES Act funds. When we sell those, all that money has to go back to the state.
Okay.
We just keep the equal percent of what we, the vehicles. Um, so right now I have two older minivans and one twelve passenger bus that we're waiting for the, the sheriff's, uh, choice set at that whole auction. He said it should be like two months.
Okay, now we're applying for funds. What, what is the dollar amount of the funds, Kurt?
Um, county, county manages thirteen thousand five hundred. The total is a hundred and thirty-five thousand for the two vehicles. Uh, state and federal funds would be a hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred. County's portion would be thirteen thousand five hundred.
For two vehicles?
Two vehicles. It's a lower four minivan and then we have a new option. It's a, uh, high, high roof, uh, four transit with a side lift that we can use. We'll, we'll be using it for our command response curb to curb service. In a perfect world, eventually I, I'll have minivans and this type of van for our command response and the buses we have will be used only on the route. And that would make it a lot easier for our folks to differentiate, oh, my bus just drove by. No, that wasn't your bus. That was. Because they do oftentimes cross paths.
Sure. Okay.
But this is a, a new option for us. Um, the transit has a, a modular flooring system which allows you to quickly go from one wheelchair station to two. You can pull the wheelchair securements up and you can add in seats. Uh, it all, it comes with extra seats. Makes it, uh, a really functional vehicle and it allows us to, to make quick changes. If we have a, for instance, if we're picking up one wheelchair in, in Morale and we get, we get a late afternoon call next morning for another wheelchair, a driver can flip a seat up, throw down one wheelchair securements and, and quickly add that second wheelchair without having to completely swap vehicles.
Okay, our, our thirteen five, that's, that has been budgeted. It's in your budget now?
It, by the time these come in, it'll be in next year's budget.
It'll be in next year's budget. That's what we're looking at. I think you said that at the beginning. I'm sorry.
Actually Friday, we went down to pick up a minivan, two buses that were over almost two years ago. So I, I was just trying to get a little bit ahead so we can get them in the.
I see.
Kinda get them in the queue to get built. Uh, so we, uh, especially if we, we have another incident or lose another engine, uh, keep replacing these. My goal is at least two a year. We've had a lot of miles. We're, our trip numbers, we're, we're nearing record territory on trips this year. I don't know if we'll make it, but we'll be close to record trips.
Okay. Uh, what's board's pleasure?
So these are, these are replacement vehicles.
We're actually, one will be considered a fleet expansion, uh, just be, because we're keeping one of the, we have two twelve passenger buses that are pretty high miles. Uh, one of them uses a lot of oil. The other one's been Nick and Don, yes. We're gonna keep one of those as an emergency backup and we're gonna dispose of the other one. So technically one's a fleet, uh, expansion. Uh, but it, it'll just be, supposed to be a backup for us when we have a vehicle down the main. It'll give us a spare.
And when you said, uh, based on the sale price or whatever we get at auction, that will determine if we're gonna keep ten percent of it or not?
Uh, no, we should, we're always gonna keep the ten percent unless it was a, it was funded differently. We have one that was Tiger funds. It was a hundred percent Tiger. The county had to make, and I have two twelve passenger buses that are current vehicles that were purchased for a hundred percent CARES Act funds. All that has to go back to the state when we sell those.
But we didn't pay anything for the costs.
Okay, might just misunderstood that piece.
Okay. What's board's pleasure?
I move that we allow the transit system to apply for the funds.
I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any other discussion?
A couple of questions. So how many totaled buses would you say then that we'll have? And how many total vans?
Go ahead.
With, uh, this will give us, one we just lost. This would give us a fourth. I'm picking up the third Friday. This would give us four minivans. By the time this comes in, I'll probably be looking at replacing all those other minivans. That's my miles on. This would be the first one of these type of four transit we have. It's the only type, more, more of these we have. And then we currently have eight of the buses that you see on the route. Um, I'm getting two more of those Friday. One will be disposed of, one will be kept as a backup.
So it's a gain of nine then basically.
We have nine. Two buses. This is the only transit we have when we get this one. And depending on, as we retire them, we'll have three minivans as of Friday. Uh, this would give us four. Again, by the time this comes in, I'll probably have another one to order because of the lead times for these, um, to kinda cycle them through, um, so they're not killing us on maintenance.
So the ones you have on the routes, you call those, what do you call those? Regular buses?
State person is a small bus.
Small bus.
Twelve passenger plus two wheelchair positions.
And what is this bus or these buses?
This one is a lower four minivan that we use for our, kind of our curb to curb service. It's a Chrysler, uh, van. They completely modified. It has one wheelchair position with your three ambulatory passengers, four transit. It depends on your configuration. It can be up to like twelve passengers. It can be one wheelchair, it can be two. You can get large baryiatric wheelchair injuries. And it would be the first one we have of this style. It refers, it's just a new contract with the state that they just signed.
Oh, I'd have.
My goal is that every vehicle we have wheelchair accessible. Right now we have two twelve passenger vans.
You can answer the question.
We press one of them to service when we have a maintenance issue, but those are mainly just used for lunch relief. Uh, when, when our route drivers are taking their lunch breaks, we send out a, a relief driver for an hour so they can eat lunch. And that's all those are used for at this point. We must be giving.
You know, as I was trying to sort through some of this information, you know, it, it makes you think different if the replacement cost is thirteen thousand dollars versus a hundred and some thousand dollars. When you're, when you start to get a certain amount of maintenance and repair expenses, it's a different thought process when you're paying thirteen thousand.
Absolutely.
And, yeah.
The maintenance repairs on us.
We get, we get night, we, we get, um, eighty-five percent of the oil and fuel costs back.
Okay.
We get ninety percent of the labor and maintenance back.
Oh, well, then that's.
But when we reach the usable life, when we reach the usable life benchmarks, which is age, mileage, and condition, we have to meet two of those three before the state will let us replace them.
I did, I didn't realize that. We were on doing all that. Okay.
And so I'm trying to keep, keep looking at those mi- the mileage and, and all that so I replace them before, because even that, ten percent of, you know, four or five thousand dollars adds up in a hurry.
Sure.
On my budget.
Let me ask you a question on your resolution here. You're asking for a hundred and twenty-one thousand from the state, is that right?
Hundred and twenty-one five would be state and federal.
But according to your resolution, shouldn't it be asking for a hundred and thirty-five and then the balance that they would owe would be the one twenty-one, but you, in order to ask, you should be asking one thirty-five on this resolution? Okay, you're asking for about thirteen thousand short on this resolution right now.
I'm, that.
Cause your numbers don't work.
A hundred and thirty-five, if you add those two, that's a hundred and thirty-five thousand. The thirteen five is our portion.
Right.
The one twenty-one five is the fed and state.
I understand that, but it says you're only asking for a hundred and twenty-one is what you're asking.
But the split between, the split between the federal and the state.
It can be, I can, I can.
Reword it.
I can reword it, but it, it's, I'm asking, I'm.
I understand, I know just what you're doing.
I guess I'm assuming I don't have to ask you for money out of my own budget.
I know just what you're doing, right? But what you're asking to do if you, if you have to use this for any, does this go to the state, this resolution?
No. Uh, will they get a copy of the resolution in the public, the public?
We've only approved that you asked for a hundred and twenty-one thousand. You're not getting that. You're not asking for enough from them. You need to ask for the one thirty-five, take off the ten percent. They're only gonna give us the one twenty-one. But I think you need to ask for the one thirty-five on this in order for it to be correct.
Ask one three five oh, which one twenty-one and what would be federal portion, thirteen thousand would be county portion kinda.
I can reword it for you.
Just make sure they're happy with.
No, that's, that's fine. If you think it'll fly.
It's, it's, it's a standard form. The resolution comes off the Nebraska Transit website. If there's an issue with it, I clarify it with the carrier, it's the state.
I think he's had some before too and they've been okay.
The same way before.
And then the public, the public notice that goes out actually breaks it down like you're asking us. It does give the total for the project and then it gives total federal, total state, total county.
I just didn't want you to be short cheated when the money came out.
Now, I'm sure.
It shows you're asking for one twenty-one.
Okay, any other discussion or comments? Record your votes.
Okay to close?
Yes.
We've got five yeses?
Thank you.
Mark, you wanna take over two seconds?
I should've asked this question before we voted, but, um, that thirteen five, that's coming out of your budget.
That's my count.
That's not, that's not in the, next year's budget.
Next year's budget.
Yeah, it'll be at least next year's.
Okay.
Did you hear that? It'll be in the, I swear to you, it's gonna be.
So we're moving on to the next item. Discuss county fuel system and proposed locations. Whoever's gonna start with it?
Well, we, we all had, uh, Lisa, Jay, myself, Troy Brown, uh, Steve, Bear, the transport folks from the detention center, had a meeting and we had a gentleman, uh, come in to do a presentation on option for a fueling station for the county building rental. And basically we're at a cost for the matter of an RFP anyway. This just gives a, gives you some idea of what we're looking at. Uh, we discussed locations. Um, Steve felt it would just be too much traffic in the county. Our, he's already busy between them and us being in and out of there. The amount of traffic is just creating a little safety hazard. Um, so Jay compiled some basic numbers on the monthly usage by department, uh, what we're gonna have totals. And then, did you give me this too?
Yep.
So you have, based on our average month price right now, you've got figures of what apartment spend in total and the sat price is based on this, 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 currently thing on this contract and maybe monthly savings and a potential annual savings. And the location we discussed, that we, we work for everyone in a fairly easy way with the, the detention center on the property. It's already owned. So this is a horrible unit. Uh, they can, we can set it out there, anchor it on a pad or we're determined, fence it in for security. We'd have to get power to it. For lighting, you're gonna shut off the actual pump itself. And then each department can be set up separately with fuel cars or cue box or whatever, um, if you parcel it out for whatever we need. Um, I've gotta get some confirmation out of the state. High requirements as far as receipts, which may change how the RFP reads or an actual receipt printer. Uh, but other than that, um, you consider us, consider the cost saves if we, if we go for, for this process.
So just gas only?
Gas, gas bill.
Now I see in the, in the bid that they are furnishing a four thousand gallon tank with it. Okay?
This is a double wall tank, doesn't require a wall or nothing, you can set it just on a pan.
It meets all the state requirements.
That's our next process, is we go through the state basically and get, figure out with them through their tank division what we need to do for the next, the first location, and how far back we need to set that.
Sure.
Will we get, did you guys, a question, generally they want you to have about an eight thousand gallon tank to bring a semi load at a time, so.
They'll bring a straight truck in.
They'll just bring a straight truck into.
That's what they usually, they're bringing right now first.
That's because we don't have a big enough tank right now.
But if we combine this with one out of the roads department, there's a possibility they would bring, we'd bring a semi.
Split, split.
Okay, if we buy it, you have it ordered at the same time.
Okay.
Certainly, just my department law, uh, significant cost savings, you know, again, we get, I get seventy-five percent of that reimbursed, but twenty-five percent of that number's still a big number.
You got a third of the project right there in your.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at the cost savings for the entire county.
That's a big deal.
That's kind of impressive.
Pay for itself.
It's a big deal.
You're, did two years at least.
Oh, at least, at least, and then we continue with the savings.
Yeah, return investors very, very quickly.
If we set it up on a four-year loan, we don't have to pay for it all at the same time, so we start making money immediately.
Now, the roads department would continue to get fuel at their location, and certainly we have two remote locations. Do we have any other re- remote areas where, for any other departments that would need to fuel otherwise?
Your, yeah, your, your shops.
Our line road shops.
Right, your shops, that's what I'm saying, so we know that, and at this point in time, you're still using the fuel tanks, I'll say, at those locations and your location.
Yes.
But otherwise, everyone else would be using this location.
And if something happens to the tank, Steve, Steve, I talked about, if something happened to the tank out at the roads department, then we would probably, they probably start using their gas vehicles at this one. Because it costs savings for them to put in a new tank.
Right.
Their, their, their gas usage.
Where, where does, Jay, maybe you don't know, where does the state patrol gas with all their vehicles, the local vehicles?
Not at the state yard.
At this, at the state yard?
Yeah.
Out that way, gotcha, okay.
And this, unless they're clear out of town, this is the same system that the state uses.
Oh, is that right?
So I'm hoping that will make it easier for me that we don't have to use receipt printer, because that's going to add in costs, but I have to run all these specs by NDOT. And then the state auditor can say, we're using the same system that state patrol and NDOT's maintenance shops are already using.
All, all built into this system.
So this is this exact brand.
Sure, sure.
These guys would come in the cheapest, but this was recognized to us, then hopefully that would eliminate that need for those printer receipts for me, but again, I have to get that approved in the state auditor.
Are these, these people supply the fuel or just the equipment?
They're just the equipment.
Just the equipment.
Now, is this gas boy, I've, I've heard of gas boy pumps, I mean, they've been around for a long time.
A lot has, several of the gas stations here in town are used gas.
Exactly, uh, so they, they're, they're proven, it's a proven, proven commodity here, so, uh.
And you're still saying, we're gonna have to go out for RFPs anyway, this is just a.
It's over a hundred, well, the way you were reading today, Lisa was reading some stuff about personnel.
In the county board handbook, it said petroleum products, we don't have to go out for competitive bids.
Right. Is that, is that just.
I don't know about the equipment.
Yeah, that's the gas, but this whole.
This will, this will fall into that category?
Well, the gas, the fuel purchase in the future, but the actual tank, we probably should do an RFP. Right, the actual infrastructure, the big above ground tank that this would be.
We can confirm all that with Phil. I think basically what we're asking for you tonight is just that we can go forward, talk to the state, and start looking into RFPs, so.
Are the other departments okay with this, sheriff's department, detention, a single place to fuel?
Let's say this is, I put the map up where they're looking. Yeah.
I'll tell you this, it makes, it makes a lot of sense, I've looked it over, it makes total sense to do this, the sheriff's department, uh, to do some checking, a lot of the, our road patrol vehicles run on eighty-seven, or require eighty-seven octane, maybe by eighty-five octane. And so, I mean, I have to, I have to make sure that, uh, those cars run at eighty-five, otherwise we may, we may still have to run at eighty-seven.
And, and pay, and, and pay a pump price then, or whatever.
This still makes sense.
Yeah.
So it's a good deal.
We can also look at buying eighty-seven.
See if there's still.
Why, why do you need eighty-seven?
Because of the high performance, uh, engines that are.
The motors required.
Well, according to this, according to this, Mark, you're using two thousand gallons a month, correct?
Yeah.
That's what I.
Well, if, if necessary, could be put into second tank with the product that you need to have.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
That would be the easy way to do it.
That's probably, that's probably about right, I think, I want to imagine it's.
That's, that's, that's what we're looking at here.
Can you do that?
So if necessary, we could purchase a second tank if, if it's not going to run, so we can continue with what we're doing, right? Yeah.
Was that? I, I don't know, we haven't asked that question.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said, Steve, what?
You can just bid out eighty-seven octane fuel.
For everybody.
And as long as the other vehicles are able to run on that. Okay.
They'll get better mileage anyway with the.
Okay, sounds good.
So then the other thought that I'm trying to process here is diesel, and does, will, will diesel ever be a, make sense along the way?
Well, they already do.
They already do it.
We're already doing that with diesel.
Right, and they're the only ones really using diesel.
I don't know of any other vehicles other than Steve's that uses diesel. I don't know.
And so as long as that equipment is in good condition, then it's a non-issue at this point.
Correct.
Um, if at some point the equipment goes out, then, yeah, do we need to rethink some things, but.
Be pretty tough to front, who have them have to go to the jail to get fuel.
Yeah, for those kind of vehicles.
Where everything's right on site when you bring them back into the shop, it's a lot handier for you to have everything right there, I'm assuming, Steve, yes.
And if they're the only ones using it, then.
Yeah, that's, that's just, that's a no-brainer.
Yeah, I think it would work.
Uh, the way we have it on the agenda, we're not, that we, we don't make a decision on it, I guess we could just say, if, if everybody's kind of in agreement, that move forward with it. Anybody have any concerns about doing it?
No, just, just, all, all departments will use this, I mean, assessor, their vehicles, tourism, investigators.
The only ones that wouldn't be for gas vehicles would be Steve's, Rosenbridge's fleets and, um, building assembly, because they fuel right there in there. They, they could, they could, but.
But, but the, the advantage is we're gonna put this out for bid, just like Steve was doing.
And we'll buy the fuel for everybody at one time.
Yes.
Maybe do it to draw a couple places.
And maybe get it, maybe get a little better price even then, or adding to it.
So, well, I'm guessing, I guess I'm wondering then two things, number one, how are we gonna pay for this? Does it get split up, or is it paid for out of capital, and then more importantly, how's the fuel get paid for? Be, because each department's gonna have to pay for their own fuel, the way I see it, so there's gonna be some administrative work to be done to make that happen.
As far as the equipment, I'll leave that to you, but what Lisa and I and the folks at the meeting have talked about, possibly running the fuel purchases through, like, the general fund or a, a set up separate fund, whatever, and this software that this has, basically will send each, will generate.
We'll split it, we'll split it, we'll split it out, yeah.
They pay back the general fund.
Lisa, Lisa will invoice us for our fuel usage for, for the month, and we're just reimbursing the general fund for it at that point.
Probably just like we do post-detection.
Yes.
And, and that, that system, and you can remember Jay, back in our old life, on that place to the north, we'd, we'd have to fill, and, and that was, oh my gosh, that's fifteen years ago. They were splitting it out then by departments, I think we filled it co-op, I believe, whoever got the bid.
Doing the same thing now.
And, 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 and that was all split out, so that's, that's nothing new, in fact, it's probably a whole lot better than, than the way we did it.
And their software's very fluid, they help, they can help us build on it, because like, we have the fuel we have to put in, um, mileage, vehicle, they're not reading, and vehicle number, uh, things like that.
And that records all of that for you.
And then we get a dispensing report, which tells me this is how much fuel we have dispensed to this vehicle, this one.
That's gonna help with your budgeting, it'll help with your budgeting also.
And that's how I have to report it to the state.
Sure, okay, I think everybody's in agreement to move forward with it, and, uh, thank you very much, guys, appreciate your hard, appreciate your work on this, you guys, sorry I missed the meeting. I would have loved to have heard all that, heard all that.
You heard it now.
It's okay.
I don't talk as, I'm talking gooder anyway. Okay, we'll receive the tourism update, Brenda, just walk up here very proudly. Is that your proud walk?
Yeah, I guess.
All right.
If I have one, that could be it. Well, yeah, you know the big news, so I'm gonna save it for last, but, um, we actually have a few things going on here this spring, first of all, um, Huddle Up Group will be here, if you remember, that's the sport, the strategic sports company that we hired, um, a few months ago, and they will be here on March twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth.
What question, how many commissioners did you invite to that dinner?
Two, I know the rules.
Okay, I didn't know, I wasn't, well, my, mine came from Carla, so I just, I just wanted to make sure.
He's as the, um, tourism, and then you're a stakeholder, so that's why we have you listed, yeah, I'm sure you should be okay.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and so, basically what they're going to do is come here and visit all of our sports facilities, and, um, that's how we decide whether or not to use any of these potential uh, facilities to expand different sports markets, so, you know, maybe they'll tell us that the soccer field's not in good, no shape, or whatever, and then that's how we move forward. But once we get that information, um, that is going to help us with our sports guide, so even though we have a sports guide with Sports Nebraska, we have to have something local. And, um, so that they will help us then determine what needs to go in that guide to make it attractive, um, for people planning sports events. And then it's also important for them to talk to stakeholders in the community, just to get a better understanding of how people feel about sports and, and what the interest is in the community, so. That's, uh, next week already, but we're excited to get that kind of put behind us, honestly, there's a lot of things they can help us do, and the sports guide would be one main thing, and then also our sports council. We need to get that group to, together sooner than later, uh, we're kind of going out of order, but sometimes things just happen in that way, so you just kind of take them as they come. Now, we did get, um, seven thousand dollars from the ARPA funds, um, from Nebraska Tourism Commission to put towards our sports guide. And so right now, we are looking at like a six-page, um, saddle stitch guide with tons of photos, that's gonna be our main thing, but then it will also have, of course, travel facts, facilities information, and then community facts as well. So, we hope to have that, um, by the time we go to Sports ETA, which is in Kansas City, and, uh, that will be March seventh, so hopefully we'll at least have.
March seventh.
When?
You missed it.
May seventh, May seventh, sorry, yeah, no, May seventh, um, and basically what happens is on March twentieth, which is obviously just, it's today. The, um, the programs open up for Sports ETA, so that means we can go in and start making appointments with different marketing groups across the United States, actually, to start bidding different sports events, so I'm sure we'll look at some baseball for sure, but then when we go to Sports ETA in Kansas City, that's the, um, like, the sixth through the eleventh, then we actually meet with these planners to see if, to try to get them, you know, to come to Gearing to host events, so, yeah. Um, it, you know, I'll tell you what, it seems so unpractical that that could happen until just what recently happened with the gravel thing, and now I know almost anything is possible, so. And of course, that's, um, really our big news here, um, we will not actually be able to have National, um, Travel and Tourism Week, because we will be gone. But Ken and I and, pray, uh, Mr. Coop will get together and decide, uh, when we want to challenge Gearing to keep our trophy, so we'll decide what.
There, there wasn't a challenge at all.
It, it really wasn't.
No, no, we.
It really wasn't.
Went in, we cleaned house, and it was, it was a done deal, so.
People playing with broken whatever collarbones, all kinds of.
It, it doesn't matter, if they, if they want to be embarrassed again, that's fine with us.
Whatever they want, right?
Yeah.
So, okay, and then, uh, as you all know, um, Scotts Bluff County and Gearing was chosen for the site for the USA National Gravel Championship Race. It's the very first national championship gravel race, um, in USA cycling history, and it will, so it's our inaugural year, which is gonna be kind of fun. We have a lot of people stepping up, tons of fun things will be happening in the community to, to celebrate that.
Do they move that around, or is it?
Well, they do, but we get it for two years.
Okay.
So for two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four, um, you know, we don't really know what to expect the first year, but we fully suspect that the population of Gearing will almost double in two thousand twenty-four. So, um, setting up a lot of temporary camping and that type of thing, we're gonna do our best to accommodate everyone, if you want to move out of your house and have a VRBO, um, that's a good opportunity. I did realize that that's the Nebraska Colorado game, so we might actually have quite a few people in Boulder, now we just have to talk, you know, the men to giving up their houses for a couple of days. But, um, the, the fun thing about this race is that it is the largest prize purse in USA cycling history, so no other race has had a bigger prize purse. And then it's also the largest prize purse for a one-day cycling event, so if they have a, a race where it's four and five days, those are usually your big sixty thousand dollar purses, this is just a one-day race. They'll run a hu- right a hundred and thirty-three point eight miles, it takes about seven hours-ish, unless it would be me, and it would take.
Two hundred, three hundred.
Two or three hundred days, um, but we are currently working on setting up our LOC committee, and everybody will be in charge of just a different aspect. We had a big meeting today, and we kind of learned about some, um, the different categories that we would all be working under, and so that's kind of fun, but, um, this is really exciting for USA Cycling, and Tara shared these facts with us this morning, so four thousand four hundred and fifty-seven people visited their website on Thursday alone, and that's the most to ever.
How many, uh, well, how many?
Four thousand four hundred and fifty-seven, yeah, to start looking up information about the race, and then three thousand four hundred and twenty-five people built our landing page. We had a landing page just built just specifically for this race, and, um, three thousand four hundred and twenty-five people visited it just on Thursday to get information. So there's definitely a lot of interest, you know, a few negative comments, but you always get those people, you know, like, why would you do it in Nebraska? Um, well, because we have more gravel than any other state, that's a, that's for starters, you know, that's a good reason, but I think the most exciting thing about this race is that Tara said, you know, she knew that the competition was gonna be tough. There was a lot of great gravel, a lot of great courses, a lot of great ideas for the event, but she said that, that Saturday morning when she pulled out of Gearing, she knew that she absolutely had to pick us because of all of our hard work and the community's enthusiasm, so it definitely wasn't just five or six people that did this, it's the entire community. It takes everyone's collaboration and our excitement and passion for our community to make things like this happen, and she, she is very impressed and very excited to work with us. And I just wanted to tell you exactly kind of how this happened a little bit, I know that I come to you a lot, and I talk about how important it is to, for us to be a part of Sports Nebraska, for us to be a part of Huddle Up, but had it not been our relationship with Sports Nebraska, this never would have happened, we joined a year ago, and then what they do is get you out in front of the different marketing bodies who are requesting sports events, so one of them was obviously USA Sports in, uh, Colorado Springs, and I was at the National Western Stock Show on that Tuesday when I found out that huge storm was coming, so I got the heck out of there as fast as I could, made it down to Colorado Springs before the snow started, and it turned out okay anyway. We didn't even hardly get any snow down there, but had I not, you know, had I, the snow scared me or whatever, and had I not made it, I never would have been out in front of those people. I visited with USA Hockey, um, wrestling, volleyball, and I just happened to be upstairs at Ultimate when the gentleman from Triathlon looked up Aaron's race, and he said, wow. I didn't have any idea Nebraska had anything like this, I mean, we knew they had gravel races, but nothing, you know, this put together yet, nothing, nothing like this, and he said, you know, who are these people? Oh, she's upstairs in Ultimate. And he said, you know, who are these people? Oh, she's upstairs in Ultimate. So I went down and um, visited with the Triathlon guy, and he's the one who set this up for us. Monday morning, I had an RFP, and I called Charlie and Aaron and said, what do you think? So here we are.
Right, I don't, I don't think you've given yourself enough credit. When, when you, when you say that, you know, you're surprised, look at what has happened in the last five years, six years, seven years. The, the, the things that are happening here that we didn't even got a, we didn't have a sniff, really. You know, the national, the national balloon races, the, the big rodeo, or the big rough stock thing last, you know, last uh, last summer. Uh, the, the baseball tournaments, all of the things. I, I spent about three hours with a, a potential client and was asking about what kind of things happened here. So I was going over some of these. And they were, so, and they're out, they're out of Iowa. Didn't realize that stuff lands here. I said, oh yeah, and, and we're not done. And we're not done. And, and they were very, very impressed, very impressed with what happens. I mean, they, they said, oh, your bluff looks really nice. I said, yeah, it does. But there's a lot of other things that are going on here. I drove them past all the ball fields, pioneers, what, to the soccer field, we did all of the, all the tour, you know, kind of stuff, and talked with them for a while, but they were very, very impressed. So congratulations for what you guys are doing.
Well, I was telling Charlie, you know, when we're putting together our, you know, our, our sports guide, you know, I said, we can put all of the baseball diamonds, you know, we can do the same thing Fremont's doing, you know, we can do the same thing that Holdred's doing, whatever, you know, everybody across the state. We can do those things, or we do, we can do what we do best. And that's, you know, we don't need multi-million dollar facilities to have to worry about maintaining or anything with the things that we're doing now. You know, I mean, the gravel, you know.
I'll, I'll put our facilities up against anybody's.
Exactly, because God built them, that's what I tell everybody. And just open fields to do this, and trails to run marathons, I mean, so it's working out good for us. That's what we're gonna kind of talk about, I think, in our, our planning guide, so.
Awesome. I was, I was thinking of buying one of those biker suits, those tight-fitting ones, and be at, be at one of the spots and hand out brochures or something.
Yeah.
That would, that would go so well.
Charlie changed the topic.
You had no comment, Charlie. I was gonna change, yeah, change the subject. I would just encourage everyone to go to USA Cycling websites, look at the production level of these events, and, and imagine that in downtown Gearing. This isn't um, this isn't just a local bike race happening, you know, this is a, this is a national championship.
Big deal.
This is the same thing as, you know, USA Swimming going to Omaha for the Olympic Trials. This is, this is USA Cycling coming to downtown Gearing. Um, so please go look, look at the production level of these events, and this is gonna look like an Ironman event, or this is gonna look like a um, you know, Boston Marathon-type event. And then if we can get the, the community to rally behind us and volunteer, participate, show up, um, come, come just be a member of the crowd and, and watch, watch the event um, start and finish will be in downtown Gearing. Um, and then I think, you know, I'd also like to thank Sheriff Overman and Rose Department Steve Baird. They both wrote uh, letters saying, you know, that they support this event, and, and those, those letters went on to USA Cycling. And having their support was really important to uh, landing the bid. So thank you guys for doing that. And I just have to commend Brenda, and she's, she goes to the, these events, and that's one thing to know, that you should go to these events. It's a whole nother thing to be able to be there and to queue in on the types of conversations that are happening. And when you, when, you know, she's, she's there, and she's getting pummeled by, you know, frisbee and golf and triathlon, and, but she's able to pick out gravel site as what works for Scotts Bluff County. One, because she's been supportive of the gravel cycling event that happens in June every year. That's just exploded in popularity. But also she knows our infrastructure, she knows um, she's, she's, she's got her finger on the pulse of, of what's happening, so.
And, and I assume these directors talk to each other?
Oh, yeah.
The director of this organization talks to this one, to this one, and all of a sudden the word gets out, there's a spot, here's a place, and it's good, and they do it right. And they do it right, so, yeah. I agree with Charlie, you guys are just awesome, doing a great job with this stuff.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else have any comments or questions with Brenda before she, before she prides her walk to the back? Mike, you have anything?
No.
Anything? Thank you, Brenda. Next item is discuss and consider the budget adjustment for the Relief Aid Fund fifteen hundred. Paulette, how are you tonight?
Can I start as soon as they're done talking behind me? Okay. Uh, that's, that's all right, I just can't talk when it's right here. Um, I'm, I asked Paulette and Deb to come and talk tonight about the Relief and Aid Fund because we set up this fund, or we, we budget this fund with purely Keno money. Keno money comes in to, to take care of all the expenses in the, that they handle. Paulette manages this, she has a part, or we have Deb Conklin, who part of her salary comes out of this fund, part of it comes out of the health fund. And I was over talking to Deb here, oh, about a month ago. And it's February, and she's turning people away who come in for rental assistance, help with utilities, and they come to, I mean, that's just a small part of this budget, it's three thousand dollars, but they're turning people away already. And this is a hard year where we know people are struggling to pay fuel bills or to heat their homes, pay their water and electric bills. And I said, we need to consider a budget adjustment, and I wanted to run it by all of you to be, since this is Keno dollars that operate this. And what I wasn't realizing at the time, and they brought to my attention, is the number of burials they've been asked to provide for, that's another thing that comes out of this budget, is the people that are indigent and funeral directors, they have nothing to pay for a burial, come to this department, and they are the only ones that, in the county or any other en- entity that would offer assistance. County's the only one that will help with the burial, with the exception of the veterans. There's some.
Right, veterans, if you qualify for their programs, there's several that they support. But we're the only ones for the average citizen that would provide that.
Right, so when you look at our budget status that the clerks provide us at the end of every month, at the end of February, we should be sitting ti- typically around sixty-six to sixty-seven percent of our budget is spent at that point. And the Relief and Aid Fund is at seventy-five percent already. And that is due to, at an exorbitant, a very large number of funerals that they've already paid. As of February, they've paid for twenty-one, and we budget for like twenty-seven in a year, and we've already paid for twenty-one. And I think that's the biggest part, what we're gonna, Paulette's gonna talk to you about, is A, increasing what we can offer, can, instead of turning people away at the half point in the year, can we put more money into helping more people? And increasing the amount we pay for our funerals, because that has not changed in well over ten years, what we pay these funeral directors, so.
The, the assistance that they're asking for, ha- have they gone through some of the other agencies, like Capwen and some of those that?
So this is a last resort.
This is, they've, they've gone everywhere else, yeah.
This is the provision, um, we have a list of people, like, depending on what they're coming to ask for, if it's utilities, we know which places like Capwen and others that, right, furnish that, or if it's buried, you know, we know the different resources in the community. So we first ask where they've been, um, we work very closely with the other agencies to know, you know, if they've been there. Sometimes we can share an expense when it comes to maybe utilities. Um, in the provisions I have before you, the first thing is some updated provisions, they haven't been updated in close to ten years. So um, we uh, looked at um, who qualifies. And so that, we changed from a set number to the one hundred percent of the federally funded, or not federally funded, but the federal poverty guidelines. And so that's updated each year, so we don't have to worry about being behind, like, we pass it today, and three years later, we're behind. That's uh, what all, or not all, but most um, nonprofits go by, is that standard that the federal government puts out, and it's updated each year. So they'd have to qualify for that, um, and that's, you know, the, how many people have been in the household, the income is the income of the whole household, um, not just, you know, like one of, like, if there's two parents and a daughter that's working, they'll have been in the household, they'll take that whole income.
That's three, three incomes.
Right. So, but it is based on how many people live there, so. So that's the one thing we put in here, we changed um, by basing it on that. And then um, we took out things that we haven't done for a long time, like, we don't do anything for clothing. Um, that was listed in there, and there's, you know, some other things that were in there that we just don't do and haven't done for a long time. There's enough other resources in our community that does some of that stuff. So we really concentrated on the things that we know that um, people need and come and ask us for, that there isn't other resources. If there's children in the family, usually we can get it, you know, help through the Department of Health or other places. And if they're seniors, a lot of times there's things that, you know, so there's different programs, and we like to work really well. There's just some people that fall through the cracks, and that's the people that we look at, but they have to qualify financially. The other thing we look at is um, burials are our main thing, and like, that's the only, we're the only resource for that, other than if they're vets. And so that's the main service I'd like to focus on. Um, we do like to be available for those emergency-type settings or some of those other things. That's about twenty percent of our budget so far that we've handed out, is the other things, but most of it's the burials. And um, we do check, you know, family, do they have life insurance? The uh, funeral homes work very closely with this, with trying to identify payment sources. And that's where we get most of referrals, is when they have gone through their process, and there's no place for payment.
So there is a lot of research that's done, and, and I don't mean to say this drugatole really, but I, I will. In today's society, there are those people that know how to get what they need to have. Whether they deserve it or not, I, I, I don't know.
And we tightened up our um, two thousand and eighteen, probably.
Yeah, tw- twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, tightened up our um, you know, being more aggressive in, okay, what other family members are there, who, you know, who can help?
Or what other resources are available, sure.
So we, we tightened that up, and that did lower our funeral cost for a little while. Um, and I think it does keep them down, but with COVID and some of the other things, um, we've seen an increase, um, you know, over the last, um, you know, because we budgeted based on what we thought would happen, based on last year's, and that we're already this close to being out of money, kind of tells you, um, you know, that, that it's a harder year for a lot of.
Well, and, and we all know, I mean, you have somebody who is uh, paycheck to paycheck, or even less than that, or no paycheck, and then the prices and the, everything increases tremendously, they still have to live. So there's nothing there. They didn't have a whole lot to start with, and now we have even less.
Right.
We have even less, and that's.
So there, there's two things I'm asking tonight. One is to approve the general provisions that we've updated. And within that, what we're um, providing the um, the funeral homes for the cremation. We only pay for cremation unless it would be legally told to us.
You don't, you don't pay for burial, right?
No. Um, we always have to put the provision in if there'd be some religion, you know, for some reason why the legal, it would've been challenged legally, they tell us we have to provide a burial, which we've never had to, and since I've been around, and I don't know of any before that. But we do have that provision in there. But otherwise, yeah, it's the cremation, there's a list of things that the funeral home, based on the price we give them, agrees to do, and it's in here. Um, and we're, we're wanting to raise that um, a hundred and fifty dollars. I did call around, Lisa gave us a list of people to compare other counties, what they pay for that's like ours. And um, we've done some calls, but we've made more calls based on that. And the um, amount that I have listed here, it's a hundred and fifty more than what we're doing, and that's the lowest amount. If you would like to go, it went as high as like around two thousand.
There were a thousand fifty, weren't there, on your request?
Right, and so uh, you know, it goes up as far as like Pla- our Plaht City giving twenty-seven fifty. Um, and the lowest is at um, Lincoln County, which is North Pla. So I went with the lowest. If you guys think that you want to go higher than that, that's fine, but I went with the lowest of, that compares with other, other.
Well, I think, two things you need to keep in mind. Number one, just like I said, there are those individuals who were at poverty or below to begin with, and then their expenses increased, as did everybody else's, and, and if, if you don't keep up with that, we're gonna run out of money. And, and it's, and uh, one of the things with Keno money is for community betterment. How much more community betterment could you have than trying to help somebody who needs some help, obviously?
The people we see, like I said, they've been other places, and like, sometimes we can share an expense, like a utility with another agency, if they pay half and we pay half, uh, you know, some things like that. So um, Deb does a great job of really screening that out and trying to find the other resources first. Um, and then uh, sometime, you know, then, then it's us, you know, we're the last resort, and then we have to look at what we can do for that person.
Okay.
So yeah, to, if you would like to approve that, again, uh, what's listed in there was the lowest amount of others, so for the funeral homes, we do like to work with them, they're very good at working with us, you know, and taking, uh, they haven't asked for an increase. I mean, they've mentioned it, but they haven't directly said, we won't do this, we should increase it. But I think we need to uh, work with them and, you know, be able to provide for those people, that there isn't any other resource with that. And then um, also then, just to approve, um, and I'm asking, we talked about t- uh, ten to fifteen thousand um, to get through the rest of the year. And I think there would be, ten thousand would be tight.
That's just adjusting your budget an additional fifteen thousand.
Additional ten thousand to fifteen thousand because of where we're at. And we've been averaging about two funerals a, a month. Um, in December, we had six. So, you know, it just depends, and, you know, winter time and, you know, illnesses like respiratory illnesses, that stuff increases. Um, you know, we see an increase in deaths in general, but there were six funerals uh, in December. Um, and then most of them are, are like two a month, is kind of average. So we could do ten thousand, but I'd hate to have to come back before the end of the year, um, if things are tied.
I would entertain a motion for a fifteen thousand dollar increase in that, in that budget line.
That comes out of the Keno Fund?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we have to have a hearing to change the budget?
Um, that's what I was gonna mention, that. This is just to operate now. Come June, we're gonna have to have a budget hearing to truly increase this budget.
This is just to increase her budget now.
Yeah, I didn't want to pay for the expense of a budget hearing, because I think we're gonna have a couple of funds that are gonna need adjusted, so we'll, we'll do them all at once in June, but we needed your approval to tell the, these ladies, yeah, it's okay to go ahead and to not shut people down in March, when there's needs out there, so.
Still looking for a motion?
Well, I moved that we approved the fifteen thousand for the uh, adjustment to relief aid, as well as the one thousand fifty dollars for cremation costs.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Any other discussion? Record your votes, please. Close?
We've got five yeses.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Paulette. Next item, discuss and consider the sale of county-owned parcels in Lyman. One in in six thirty, six fifty-seven, and six sixty-six. Lisa?
Do you want to see where they're at, or anything? I mean, like, we discussed this last week, that was coming up, and I think, I just brought it up at the end. I guess I'm not even in stand-up. Um, I brought it up at the end of the meeting, and then I, then I'm understanding, well, I need an official part of the meeting minutes in order to do this. So I needed approval to go ahead and start the process to sell them. And then um, Phil, I worked with Phil Kelly, because there are three parcels, they'll pay two, two fifty each. They're just little twenty-five foot skinny little parcels.
Not used for anything else.
Yeah, Village of Lyman.
Then they can merge them with the ones they have.
Yeah, exactly, so, they would purchase them, so we have to have the approval tonight. Then we come back with, we have to, just like we're doing with the City of Scotts Bluff thing. Now, we put it in the paper saying, this is the parcels we want to prove, and put it out there for public comment or public hearing. And then you get it, but you get a contract. Anyway, Phil brought it up to me the other day, if I can work with this, with Dave Eubanks, to at least just, since this is an easy, fairly simple sale, we already have a buyer, that maybe we don't have to utilize him as much, and save some attorney fees. Because he, that's what he was saying, you're not making any money if I do all the work, so, we've got some. We, Kelly and I can post it for sale, or put it, post, post the whatever, the public hearing in the paper twice, and and get a contract with Village of Lyman, so.
So I would move that we agree in principle on the sale of these three lots, and that we authorize Lisa to proceed with doing whatever she needs to, to sell them. to sell them legally and appropriately.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, on this, we had talked about those three lots and then you had one South Aguirre and did anything happen to the other lot?
That's going to be a different, that'll be, that's a private, that'd be to a private individual. We, we would have to advertise that one. And I don't know that he wants to pursue it, so we'll see. Any other discussion, questions, comments? Record your votes, please. Closed?
Five yeses.
Thank you. Next item, discuss and consider ratifying chairman's signature on the JAG grant. Teresa Briggs, Teresa's.
Teresa's not here, but Sheriff and I can represent her.
Sheriff and you can, Sheriff's going to handle her. All right. Sheriff and Lisa.
Well, we have it, it's just.
It's a, it's something we ask you to do every year. This is a routine thing. It's a grant that comes to us from the Crime Commission. Frankly, they're behind on paying us for right now. We're working through that. We've got, we've made a little bit of progress. We've got twenty-five thousand dollars and we still owe us some more, but we're making progress. They've got new staff down there, just like everybody has, and they're finding their way. But the good thing is, we are the fiduciary with it, but it's, it's one that passes through and it just goes to support the wing task force. And it's a good thing. There's no accounting match involved in it. So, but, but we need your signature to apply for the grant. And I, and I think it's, I think the grant is a done, it's a done deal. They're going to give us the money.
Okay.
So.
So we're, we're ratifying?
Anybody has any questions?
Not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to ratify the chairman's signature on the JAG grants.
Is there a second?
All second.
Any other discussion? Record your votes. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, old business?
Hang on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I need Charlie and Ken.
Excuse me?
You need to vote.
You need to vote again.
Again?
I gotta, I gotta, I have to open it before you can, you might hit it right away, but, did you vote?
Yes, I voted the first time.
Okay, there we go. Now I see it. Okay, close.
All right, now move on to old business.
I've got five yeses.
Thank you. Under old business, there isn't any updates on the Tenth Street building at this point, right now. When there is, we'll make sure everybody knows about it. Public comments, at this time the board will take comments from the public, knowing that we won't take any action tonight. Anybody from the public who wishes to speak to the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to board and staff reports. We'll start with the board. Move our way. Anything?
Well, Steve Baird had put some different blades on some of the road graders this last week and it's really brought up some gravel and it's really making, it's really doing some good on those roads, I think, you know, the, it's blending that mud where they had been muddied in all winter and drove through and generally you go out with a sharp, smooth blade and they just cut the top off of it. With the blade he's using right now, it's actually stirring that up. It's going in with fingers, blending that dirt with the gravel and it's really making a good base out there. I was really happy with what I've been seeing out there.
Is this something that we've been doing or is this something new?
It was something we tried eight years ago for a short period of time. These blades are rather pricey. Kind of, the one set burned through pretty quick, so they kind of went away from the back then. So I have another set and I'm trying for CAT that are similar to them. They look like they're going to maybe pull down, get a little wear out of them. So we'll see, we'll see how it goes. It's kind of an experiment. Cuts the washboards out for running and that, out better and that, so.
Okay.
Try it something different.
That seems to be the worst. The, the, the roads that I, out and about are more of the, more of the washboard stuff going on.
This really undercuts the washboards really nice. It's really doing a good job, like what I've seen.
Okay. Mike, you have anything?
I've been meeting with different emergency services, agencies concerning our ninety-one-one system. I'm going to meet with Scotts, our Scotts Bluff Rural Fire Chief and their fire board Wednesday morning. I've been talking with Randy down in Valley Ambulance, of course, under Chaplin, so we talk a lot about things, but there's been a real issue with quality assurance on dispatching. Agents being dispatched to the wrong town, the wrong resources being dispatched. And so I talked with the new trainer down at the ninety-one-one center and she's going to be a good one. She knows what she's doing and so I'm going to team up with her too to, to make sure these things get resolved. They have, she's put together a basic standardized training for all dispatchers, which I'm surprised Nebraska didn't have. And so that way they'll all be on the same sheet of music and hopefully they'll all be following the correct protocols. And so we won't be having ambulances going to Harrisburg when they should have been going to assist Harrison. And we won't have overuse of resources. For instance, when these retirement communities get a, an alarm or a medical concern, like in Scotts Bluff, Scotts Bluff Fire is to respond to that. Because there's no known patient, but if a patient is identified, then Valley rolls to do it. So it's just going to, and I've got to talk to Troy Brown too, I talked to him already, but as a follow-up. I think with the county hiring, I call her Cindy, that's not her name, as a trainer, it's going to solve all these issues. And so I think it's just going to get a whole lot better, but I'm, I'm going to stay on top of it because I'm, that's near, dear to my heart. Make sure we use our resources correctly and accurately and timely.
Thank you, Mike.
And then we'll be going to City this weekend to assist the emergency management down there, training their new cert team. So I'll be doing that. And then the following weekend, we'll be training a new cert team here.
So is Troy a big part of that then, Troy Brown?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the process.
Right. So he's heavily involved with that process?
Okay. I spent most of the day Thursday at a Region One Mental Health Training with several other, with several other commissioners and interested citizens. Actually, it, it started out, I was, I was not, not getting into it like I should have. But as the day went on, there's a lot of good information was disseminated out, out of that. And all the issues that we have here, the issues that they're trying to work on. The Juvenile Detention Center came up and I assured everybody that it's, we're looking, that's, that's all we're at right now. Is just trying, trying to make a decision as to how we're going to handle things. So they're very interested in that sort of thing. So it was a pretty good session. Had a, a aging meeting and they're frustrated with, with the state and some of the things that the state is trying to impose or take over, I guess, a better term. From what our, our local individuals are doing, the state feels they might be able to do it better and they're not doing it better. So we talked about people falling through the cracks. We have people falling through the cracks because of some of the things that the state does or doesn't do, whatever the case might be. And I, I, I can't give kudos enough to this aging office, the local aging office here. The longer I'm involved with it, the more impressed I am with the kind of things that they do for our, all of our folks here in Scotts Bluff County. Well, not only Scotts Bluff County, but the eleven, the eleven other counties. So it was, it was a busy week in meetings. I sat for a long, long time. So, Mark?
I only wanted to mention that, you know, for quite some time, I've brought up the idea of us having a county attorney to help us with our civil issues. Obviously, we have our county attorney that does the criminal and prosecuting things and that's been great. I think there's been some discussion even with Dave Eubanks about the thought of us having a county attorney to help take care of some of the civil things. And we've seen Phil Kelly do some of that stuff for us recently. But some of us sit on or have sit on boards that have legal or attorneys sit on their boards and attend those meetings on a regular basis. And I'm just of the opinion that the size of the county is far bigger than some of these other organizations that we talk about. And I am of the opinion that I don't like the thought of spending the money. But in the overall scheme of things, I'm trusting that it's actually going to save us money. We've talked a little bit about the things of whether it be any of the elected officials or department heads that could have a place that they could, a place or a person that they could go to when they needed some simple legal advice especially, that they would have a place to go. My point is this, and that's that I'm going to start pursuing that heavier. I'm going to ask it to be put on the agenda at some point. The biggest issue that I think we need to be thinking about is how do we want to go through the process of deciding who that is? But I'm going to be bringing it up and I just wanted to give you a heads up of that here at this meeting.
You're talking about paying a retainer for somebody?
I don't know.
Or, or a per service?
I don't know.
Type of a thing, you don't know yet, okay?
Have you spoken to Dave personally?
Ken.
I, I did.
You did?
Yes. His, his opinion is, is to do kind of like what we're doing now. Finding the individual that is proficient in whatever it is that we need to have done. When you pay a retainer to a firm, then you're paying out money for something that you may not be getting. So let's say whatever firm it happens to be. And, and just to carry on what you're saying, back in the days of the school district, we had a attorney. What, a attorney from a firm, but that was the attorney that handled everything for the school district. The Airport Authority has a attorney from, from a firm, but that's the only individual that does any of the work for that, for that Airport Authority. City of Scotts Bluff, City of Scotts Bluff, I, I'm not sure whether they have this Kent or whether they've hired the whole firm. I, that I don't know. You would be better to answer that.
Well, I know that they have the firm, only in that, I said on the LB eight forty committee for the city and that Adam Hosing, I think his name is, he's the, the attorney from their office that comes to those.
That helps with that.
Right.
And I, and I think they pay a retainer, as, as does the Airport Authority and as did the school district. We had to put it out for RFPs because we had other, other firms that wanted to be part of all of that.
So I'm going to try and get maybe copies of those agreements. They should all be posted anyway. And so I'd like to get copies of those agreements and maybe we can look at those. I'm not trying to push that we do something in the next meeting or two, but I also know that we've talked about it for quite some time. And I would like to start moving it into a positive, what I consider a positive direction and figuring out how can we select this person or firm and then what do we pay this person or firm? And so I, I'd like for us to start making it public knowledge and more and that people know about it. And I do believe one of the things that I hope it does, and that's, we've certainly been concerned about county attorney's office, Dave Eubanks' office not having enough people or help. And at the very least, it should free him up somewhat in not having to deal with some of the civil things for the county. And hopefully that would give some additional time for him to focus on criminal things.
I don't know that we've used him that much, have we, Lisa, the county attorney's office?
No.
I think most of it's been individuals in their, their specific expertise to give us a hand.
I know before even I think that I was on, now for over a little over four years, I know that I heard possibly Heather and some others saying we needed some advice sometimes and we called on someone else.
Yeah.
And, and so I know it's been happening some. It'd be great to have someone that we could say, this person or firm is looking out for our interest. And they have our interest at heart.
And years, years ago, there was, Dick Douglas did a lot of work for the county, a lot of different things. I don't know if there was ever a formal agreement. I think he was a paid per hour kind of a situation, similar to what we're doing. But I don't, I don't believe we hired the whole firm. I think it was just Dick to do the, to do the thing. And I've been in agreement with you for, since we started all of this, because it'd be nice to be able to look over and say, what do you think? Or can you help us with this or can you do something? What's your opinion?
Should we table it?
Should we table this? Can we do this? Can we not? Whatever the case might be. And we don't have that.
Right.
And, and nothing against the folks that are helping us out now with the things that we've had issues with. I think Lisa's been very, very pleased with, with her working with the ones that we're working with. And I know Phil's doing a, a great job on our real estate stuff and, and so I have no complaints about that. But I, I don't disagree with you at all. I think we need to firm it up and tighten it down and decide how we're going to do it so we have it all the time. I have no problem with that.
I'll put it on the agenda at some point.
Very good, thank you. Charlie?
Um, just to kind of dovetail off what Harris was talking about, I think, you know, this, this isn't a new conversation, but I just want to reiterate that maybe we should talk to NERMA and NACO just to see if they can provide any insight into how other counties are handling this. Or if they have services that we can utilize as members of those entities.
Can I add something? Because yes, NERMA does have now, kind of like we have a human resource called Pam Born, one eight hundred number. They do have a legal defense number at NERMA to contact Jeff Kilpatrick and I can't remember the other Patrick Guyman.
We just one step ahead of that, not even. I think, I think just being so far removed from the eastern side of the state, we, we tend to not utilize them as much as we could. So I think it, you know, maybe it would be wise for us to have a, I don't know, a retreat or a work session where we just get on the phone with NERMA and say, hey, why don't we just talk about what it is you can provide for us? You know, and just, just to kind of refresh us on, on what they can do for us. We can do the same thing with NACO. There is, NACO is actually building a, a facility in Okalala. And they're going to be renting, they're going to be renting space to, um, the Nebraska Bar Association. They're going to be renting space to Pikes, they're going to be renting space to all these other, um, oh, what's the HR solution they use?
Zell.
Zell HR. Um, so it's kind of, kind of be like their NACO West. And so they're going to have more of a presence out here in western Nebraska. I don't know if they would put a lawyer out there.
Good question.
If it's a, if it's an opportunity for us to, you know, have some cost savings while, while also getting some legal counsel, I think that'd be wise. But we do have those, we do, we are members of those organizations, so I think we should just touch base with them. But it would be nice to have, you know, somebody here more often, so.
It's, it's surprising the number of counties that don't even have a county attorney. That they use somebody privately to do all of their prosecutions and to do their, I was, I thought everybody had a county attorney. No, it's not true. And, and, and then, and then the numbers are large in the, in the counties across the state, other than, you know, you clear back east.
Um, the other items I had was, um, two weeks ago, we had PAD. Um, the other items I had was, um, two weeks ago, we had PAD, um, two weeks ago, we had, uh, TCD. Um, again, I just reiterated my, my thoughts to TCD about the housing and I suggested maybe we have a committee that focuses on housing and that committee can just report to the board rather than have the board taking the entire meeting to discuss housing. Um, and there was a bit of a change of tone there, um, I think about forty percent of the meeting was, was used on, um, business attraction, retention, recruitment, that sort of stuff. Um, had a really good report from the, uh, director that day on, on his, uh, efforts in that, in that space. Um, you know, like tourism's thing, I think all that got, I explained in the news. Uh, but that was, that's what I was referring to last meeting when we were under an embargo, we weren't allowed to talk about it, but, um, it got out, so, um, the, the embargo passed and we got it out in the media, it's pretty exciting. Um, but I do just, you know, if you, if, I just want to plead for each of you here tonight, if you could come to the event, you know, the more people we can pack in downtown gearing on that day, especially for the finish of the event and the start of the event, would just be, um, tremendous. It's on a Saturday, it's, it's September ninth, um, you know, probably step into the Union and watch the Huskers play Colorado, um.
Maybe the Union could get the TV outside.
While, while the race is going on.
Right.
Um, we'll try to make it a big, a big, exciting thing to do. Um, oh, uh, Panhandle District Meeting is, will be a week from Wednesday here.
March twenty-ninth.
March twenty-ninth. Is it on Weebord or at the Civic Center?
I was just gonna ask you where.
My Civic Center.
Civic Center.
If you're not registered, ask Kelly to register.
I think I, I think I did that already.
It'll be the morning hours of Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, eight to noon-ish. Once provided.
I'd plan it like eight to one.
Okay. Anything else?
Legislation.
Anything on legislation, it's moving again.
Oh my gosh.
Is it?
Yeah, well, she, they, she actually had a meeting with the speaker.
Yeah.
And they're gonna, they're gonna move her two big bills up, I think this week possibly.
Start, I thought it said starting tomorrow.
Maybe tomorrow, they're, they're gonna discuss it, I don't think either one of them are gonna go anywhere, but at least it's gonna get out and they can all talk about it, do what they need to do.
I've never watched so much in my life.
I've texted, or I've, I've, I've messaged her more than once.
Oh.
Several times, actually.
She responded.
Expressed my, she didn't respond. Or neither did Harden.
Oh.
I was texting him on, on his, what his support was going to be on the, uh, on the uh, one hundredth meridian. I know. I know that, but I think there's enough, the, the, the comment that was made is that is the people in western Nebraska thought that this casino effort was going to stop at Grand Island or North Platte, the vote would have been much different. And I thought that was, Jorgensen made that, I believe.
Um, what was it? I forget what I was gonna say, but it was related to that hundredth meridian.
Yeah, they had the, they had the committee hearing, uh, Brian Becker was there for it and politicking and trying to gladhand as many people as he could, like, like he does very well, he knows a lot of those guys. The last I talked with him, he's, he's pretty positive about it, so we'll see what happens. Okay, anything else? Anybody else? We are adjourned.
I, you didn't say staff or courts.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, you know what, never mind.
It does.
I, I.
We just have a health fair Wednesday here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, if you heard me, we have a health fair, love for you to come check it out and support us. Wellness Committee is offering it for the employees. Um, and Pam Born was gonna be in town April fifth, encourage you all to attend that.
April fifth?
April fifth, I believe she's at Civic Center.
She's gonna be at the Civic Center.
Civic Center.
What was?
Uh, Nirma, Nirma, yeah, she comes every year, usually comes every year, except during COVID, so, good, she's, good information.
Anything else?
And, um, oh, I'm putting in an RFP with Blue Cross Blue Shield through NACO, I started the process this week, so we'll see where that leads us, to see what their insurance would look like health and why, health insurance wise.
Okay.
So, anyway, that's all.
Kelly, do you have anything?
I was just gonna draw your attention to the, to the, uh, correspondence, I could, I saw, I happened to run across, there was gonna be a Board of Equalization Workshop on June seventh, but then that's in the morning hours and then in the afternoon starts a, of the seventh, starts a, just a board workshop and it goes into Thursday. And I'll try and keep reminding you, but in case I don't, I wanted to, I just saw it, so I printed it and made sure I had it in, in your pocket, so.
That's a NACO sponsored thing.
Set it aside, this is NACO stuff, yeah. And so set it aside and keep bumping it up to remember if you guys wanna, are gonna be able to attend or not. I think they're.
Sheriff, do you have anything? Mark? Nothing?
I can tell you the, uh, Attorney General of Nebraska stopped here last week and stopped the visit with me and some of the law enforcement. He told me to mention, he was talking to the juvenile detention center, you know, last year he was the Speaker of the Northern State Church, and so he, uh, told me to discuss that with the governor and see if there was a possibility, state like, some, some, some part of it.
So you planned this?
He didn't, he didn't know.
Yeah.
He hasn't worked, I mean, he's a lawyer, an accomplished lawyer, he's got a law firm, a law lawyer, he comes to things like juvenile detention, he, he just doesn't know what's going on, he doesn't know what he wants his place in the rest of the world, it's three hundred and sixty, what else?
That's good information for those young guys to know.
Yeah, he's, I've known him for a long time, he ran, I think he first ran about eight years ago and he ran against Doug Peterson, he lost, but at the time he was, he was really, then he got into the legislature and did well, well regarded as a Speaker and, uh, then he ran for Attorney General and he probably has other ambitions, but he's a, he's a sharp, he's a sharp man. And, and last year in the legislature, there, there were things moving through the legislature that, that, that a lot, I'm telling you, law enforcement was very much against some of the things that, that some of the, uh, committee people were proposing, and I guess the guys said, hey, this is him, and he was, he was really a key to stopping some things.
Okay.
He's a, he's a good, he's a good judge.
All right, very good. Forget the first half, now we're adjourned.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. All right. Scotty, I have to put my, 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 my.
Thanks, Ken.
You put it in the way that you can work it out.